On council meeting, please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Julie, would you mind taking roll call, please?
Greg Susan.
President.
Don Loudon.
Present.
Robert Pope.
Present.
Tim Roberts.
Present.
Steve Eisenbarth.
Present.
Next item, first item on the agenda, the January 12th, 2023 check register and the approval minutes from the December 15th, 2022 meeting. If there's any questions, comments, would anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept them as presented.
We have a first.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Julie, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Robert Pope.
Four.
Greg Susan.
Four.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth.
Four.
Tim Roberts.
Four.
Next item on the agenda is the first of two public comment opportunities. You may comment on items on the agenda that are not a public hearing or on a specific matter within the council's jurisdiction. This is not a Q and A, but an opportunity to share your comments with the council. Please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and limit your time to three minutes. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close that section of public comment, move to department updates. Who's who's going first? Mike, you're already standing.
I like standing. It's good for you. Good evening, Council. Mike Tulli, Director of Planning and Building and Building Commissioner for the Town of Avon. You should have a copy of my December 2022 report as it's also doubles as a year end report. And as you can see, we did between building permit revenue, which was over $536,000. So collected over $61,000 on planning cases. So we had a very good year for that. So and also, one of the things that I'm very proud of is that we completed over 18,000 field inspections last year. So we got a lot. Needless to say, so I'll happy to answer any questions you may have.
I don't have any questions, but good job to you and your staff for keeping up with the workload.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
All right. Also, one last thing. Unfortunately, Bill Peebles, the Plan Director, had to leave. He was feeling a little under the weather. So Ian, our senior planner is here and he's going to give you an update on Plan Commission B A. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Ian Loera, Senior Planner. We only have three items on the January 23rd Plan Commission meeting. First one is M A P P 2216. That's the Countryside Estates Primary Plats on 100 North. That had gone to Plan Commission and they had a waiver for a single access that was denied and they were granted a continuance to February. So as of right now, they're moving forward. And then the only other two we have are Academy Sports and Outdoors. That's going into the empty lot next to Buffalo Wild Wings, to the east of Buffalo Wild Wings. So we have a plat amendment to divide that lot and a development plan to actually construct the building. It's going to be a 63,000 square foot retail building. Nothing for B Z A this month, so it's been canceled, but I expect to have quite a few on the February B Z A meeting. Any questions? Oh, Bill and I did have interviews with the Code Enforcement G I S Planner. We had held the last of them today, so we have discussions of that and making a decision here soon, so I started updating you on that.
Excellent. Great. Thanks, Ian.
Thank you.
Tag me in. Good evening. Shelby Marshall, Park Director for the Town of Avon. Just some updates. I was a presenter at the Citizen Academy on Tuesday. It was the Parks and Rec Departments presented on that, so it was myself and Laura Helmick from Washington Township. It went really well and I want to thank Jared for that opportunity. We have all of our events scheduled for the year. Those are live online, so I encourage you to check out that calendar on our website. The Police Department is very active with the Project Lifesaver. That's something that I feel passionately about. And given the the properties that we have in the space at the park covers in the town, I have worked with Brian Nugent about this. And I'd offered to buy a receiver and for my staff to be trained on that. They graciously purchased the receiver for us, so we will now have a receiver up at the maintenance barn. So if the need were to ever arise, hopefully not, but we will be prepared to assist in any Project Lifesaver techniques that we could provide in our park department and on our property. And then my staff get on that next Tuesday, so I want to thank the Police Department for offering that and my staff for being willing to participate in that. And our next event is Glow Bingo. It is a free event, January 26 to 8 p.m. at Parkside Church. And we encourage you guys to come and wear your neon so you glow. Any questions? Thank you.
Did not know I was supposed to give a high five in order to walk up here. Good evening, Council. Tim, welcome. Glad that you're here. Jared Wade, Communications Director for the Town of Avon. Couple different things going on here at the beginning of the year. First, there is a new employee that is here in Town Hall. Angel back there is our new Marcom Specialist. So also want to make sure everybody knows at home that when I was introduced as a new staff member, nobody clapped, so thank you for that. Definitely appreciate it. Doesn't feel real. I'm going to be honest with you. Doesn't feel real. No, Angel is is on board. She's helping. This is her second week here and she's doing a fantastic job, especially on the marketing side of things. She's helping me out with a lot of visual graphics. She assisted myself and the Parks Department in some new park promotion material for being glow, which you've already heard about, and some ideas coming up later on this year. So very excited to have her on board and to kind of explore her brain and see what creative things she comes up with. On more of a technical side and technology, we have, we are wrapping up our Office 365 migration. There's still a little bit left to do. There's some things that our IT company is putting the finishing touches on, but that process, for the most part, has gone well. Just like anything, when you move a whole bunch of things from one place to another place, sometimes things don't go as smoothly as planned. But the nice thing is, is everybody here on staff, as well as our IT company, have been really good to work with. So making that transition has been as smooth as possible. That way we can keep working and moving forward for the town and all of the citizens and residents, businesses, so on and so forth. Lastly, we are moving our code and ordinances online. If you know, over the last several years, it's all been done in one giant PDF that our legal team has graciously put together and then sent over to Julie, who then uploaded it through 480 something pages. It is now completely available online. You're able to very easily and very quickly look for exactly what you're wanting to look for. You can put up, put in there and search fields and you can save things and you can share specific ordinances and codes. It's a really, really neat service. Anna and Julie have been working with me on that and the the first of the three sections are books, which is our main town code and ordinances line. We also have the U D O that's going to be available very soon and our storm water management ordinance that's getting ready to get an overhaul all here, I think, in the next month. Again, all these steps to make us more efficient, make us easier to connect with, make it so that way, no matter where we're at in the community, we're going to be able to service the residents and the businesses anytime, any day, as long as we have some accessibility to the joys of the internets. So with that, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Just to thank you, you know, those hyperlinks are very helpful and be able to go through large documents like that. Tim and I were talking earlier, like, you know, it's hard to get in these all these ordinances when you're you're working with it, so thank you for making it friendly.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Thanks, Jared.
Thanks, Jared.
Steve Moore, Public Works Director. As Jared mentioned, we are doing a storm water management ordinance update. We had our kickoff meeting with our consultant here this week and so that's something that's going to be coming and we're looking forward to that. It'll give us more flexibility than what we've had in the past and it'll be, I think, more of what we actually can use here in town. Community crossings, there's going to be a submittal. It's due by January 27th. What we're going to submit are Raceway, Galen Drive and some business entrances, roads that we have like Beechwood that actually lead to businesses. We're going to focus on that this year. Trail construction with Oak, that part is done. I think I mentioned that last time, but they also have now completed some of the enclosing of the ditches. We have some more to enclose yet, but they're doing a good job with that. I'm not looking for good production because of their time. They're just using it as fill-in work. So it'll go a little bit slower, but they are enclosing ditches and it's starting to look pretty good out there. We also have some of our other stormwater projects going on. And again, being winter work, they're not making great production, not trying to, but we are making progress and I'm like, I'm liking what I'm seeing so far. 100 South Reconstruction. We now have all the operations at Ronald Reagan and 100 South. We have almost all the signs up, the ones that we were complaining about and ones that we were requesting for quite some time are now installed. They do have some other signs they have to take care of. We have some street lights that need to be repaired along the corridor. There's some light work they're going to get done throughout the winter, but basically we have spring work, which includes landscaping items, more striping, finishing up the trail and of course punch list items. But we're in pretty good condition for the winter. I'm not real happy with the striping out there, but that's okay. I've asked them to come out and refresh it. We'll see what when they get that done. That's just part of maintenance of traffic. We're not paying extra for that. That's something that they have to do. So our consultant is working on that, getting them to come back out there to do that. Raceway and 100 North Roundabout, we are finalizing the drainage design so that then we can confirm the right of way that we need. And then we can get with the utilities and get work plans and figure out what we need. So we should be getting work plans started by the end of February for that. The 900 East Angelina Way Roundabout, we've kind of changed direction on that a little bit. We're getting updated traffic counts. The design that was initially proposed, we want to confirm it. And so since we have more businesses open now and it seems like we're getting a lot more traffic than I think was anticipated in the original traffic study, I want to confirm traffic. So we're having some more traffic counts taken just to make sure that our design isn't outdated before we even get it built. So that's going on. Stormwater, Bill just went out again for the quarter. The usual customer service calls are being taken by Betsy. Dan Jones widening. We're waiting for the notice to proceed to the contractor. In that did cash our checks, so we know that that the project is progressing. So we're kind of waiting to see when they actually issue the notice to proceed for the spring start. See what else we got. Pothole patching. We've done the emergency pothole patching ourselves, but we have our contractor, Grady Brothers, coming out. I think it's Tuesday of next week and they have about 30 holes to patch and then they have some milling and filling that we're going to have them do as well for some other areas that are kind of big areas. So that should be happening on Tuesday and then just traffic sign replacement. We did finally get a shipment of some more anchor posts. We're like everybody else, you know, sometimes materials are hard to get in in this business environment and so we've been waiting for quite a while to get our anchor posts and we just got those. So we'll get you out and repeat some signs here shortly. Unfortunately, not all the signs came in, so we'll have posts, but the signs are coming. But we'll get up the ones that we have. I think that's pretty much it. Do we have questions?
Yes, Steve.
You know, I looked at you as soon as I.
Yeah, I'm sorry. End dot Crawfordsville, any updates on 36 as far as pavement surfacing, slopes, those type things?
I think they're pretty much shut down for the winter. They've they've committed to, you know, getting on it right away, first thing in the spring. I don't want to be a movement throughout the rest of this winter. The same thing with the pavement markings on them. We've reached out to them as well and asked them to keep them fresh. We don't have any control over that project.
I know.
You know, we're we're just basically a super citizen when we call and ask for for them to do things, but we, you know, we we do call and ask on behalf of the citizens.
I know. They they tend to be responsive to us, but yeah, the markings are always a hot topic there. So I think they've heard us. We've we've made it pretty clear to them, so hopefully.
We we call often.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for updating the Angelina Way and 900 Roundabout.
You're welcome.
You know, that's my pet project.
Well, it is your pet project and I was expecting to see you after accounting traffic, but I haven't seen that yet.
I count so high.
Good evening, everyone. Sean Stoops, Chief of Police for the Police Department. Officers Quilter, Officer Carrier and Officer McDaniel have completed their pre-basic training. They're now moving on to their phase of their field training program. And all three of them have been scheduled to attend the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy in May. We currently have a merit board vacancy, so it was kind of unexpected. We do have a department meeting scheduled January 19th and we'd like to have some candidates sent our way, if you know of any, so that our officers can review those and maybe make a nomination and vote on someone. And if you're watching out there online, if you if you have an interest in that, please go to our website where you can contact the Police Department directly and we'll be happy to give you more information about how to apply for that position. We had just finished our most recent hiring. Our detectives are currently doing the background investigations and hopefully we can have a pretty good shot at filling the five vacancies that we have.
Sean, what was the number of that list?
14.
Wow, okay. Thanks.
Little shorter, but the quality, I mean, it's pretty good, we're hoping. You should have in your packet, the calls for service and data highlights. It's for December, but you also see, if you've never seen this before, Mr. Roberts, you'll have everything there from all the previous months as well. And last year or last year, we did just over 15,000 calls for service. And I'm not going to bore you with all the totals there, but if you have any questions about that, be happy to answer any questions regarding that. Our investigators are pretty busy. They've had about 39 new criminal cases in December that they that they received. And those are the more serious cases that we've talked about before. These aren't just your your lower level misdemeanors and felonies. These are the higher levels, so they've cleared 15 of those in December. And all the while they were doing this, they were also attending training and also affecting search warrants and doing the background investigations and everything else that they do to help support the department. Also in your packet, you'll have the Narcotics Unit Monthly Report. Our Narcotics Unit in collaboration with Brownsburg, they've done a really, really good job. As you can see, they've been doing a lot of surveillance and they've taken quite a bit of illegal narcotics off the street here recently. So kudos to them and we thank them for all their efforts. The Indiana Crime Guns Task Force, you'll see that there's a you'll have a spreadsheet there for the entire year, as well as one that just started in January. You should have in your packet. They've taken about almost 400 guns off the streets in 2022. Over 350 arrests for this in the state and about over 40 federal arrests for the year of 2022 as well. Obviously, we don't know what we don't know. We don't know how many crimes we may have prevented here in our county or our town. But we'd like to think that they're making an impact and preventing a lot of those violent crimes from seeping over in our area. So kudos to Detective High and the rest of that team as well. We really appreciate all their efforts and all their extra time that they put in away from their family and committing themselves to those task forces. So and thank you for the support as well to allow them to do it. Be happy to answer any questions.
Hey, Sean.
Yes, sir.
Always sad to see the child abuse investigations. Good news was that you have only had of those 11, two only going there. I'm looking at the spreadsheet. Is it the crimes against child and the chins? Is that the column, the row I should look at?
It is, and but you have to remember there's other things that are listed in there as well, because obviously
it's a higher.
My spreadsheet would be gigantic if I separated them all. So you're going to have, you may have missing children in there, chin cases, child abuse cases. I mean, so it's it's not misleading, but it's a total of all of those types of cases related to children.
Okay, I'm sorry you have to deal with that kind of thing. And I'm looking at the numbers, how it goes up and down. It's but thank you for, you know, getting those wrapped up. That's all I had. I was just curious about it. That's all.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Just thank you. Apologies. Julie?
Yep.
Ms. Loker?
Clerk Treasurer's Department is happy to say we have already balanced our books for December. We're going to be rolling into the new year already, which is about almost two weeks ahead of schedule from last year. Everything's gone smooth. We've started to input all of our budget for this year. And Kathy is a rock star and has converted all of our payroll over to this year's numbers as well. Starting our annual financial report, which isn't due to the state until the end of February, but it takes a solid two months to complete. Once that's submitted to the state, you guys can go online to the gateway and anybody can view that there and it'll have all the numbers from last year. We do still have the A R P funds, which we have not touched, that you guys have this year to start spending.
December 31st.
December 31st, and that's about it.
Thank you. I'm not forgetting any departments, correct? I was looking at you, Jared. Moving on, next item on the agenda, Council Comment Liaison Report. Tim, usually I start over there on the left, but it's your first meeting. I don't want to put you in it. All right, put you on the spot. Mr. Roberts.
I have nothing to report.
I like it. Fair enough. Ms. Loudon.
I enjoyed my three weeks vacation, so nothing to report for me as as well.
Ain't that kind of the truth. Mr. Susan?
Well, first of all, welcome, Tim. It'll be fun. I had the 1220 Plan Commission meeting that I attended. I attended Chief Smith with the Washington Township Avon Fire Department Retirement Open House. And then I also attended the January 3rd Township Board Meeting where they asked for a waiver on the selection of a fire chief from members of the department. That's all I have. Mr. Eisenbarth.
So, Tim, the reason they wrap around this way, because usually this end of the table gets kind of weighty and I go along, so sometimes he'll start here, but he learns that he goes along our meeting. Welcome. We do sincerely appreciate you coming on board and and just really being with us here on that. Also, welcome to Angel for your creativity. We look forward. Jared puts the nuts and bolts. We're looking to you for creativity. Jared, you do a good job of creativity, too. You're going to you're going to have a great asset there, so thank you. Other than that, really, you know, end of the year, we I just hasn't been that many meetings going on, so I'll be silent on that point.
Welcome, Tim. We need, we need, we need the help up here. I want to reiterate what it was a wonderful time off. Needed that. I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday season and a safe and Happy New Year. And to all of us, we've got a lot of work to do ahead of us and looking forward to getting to work. That's it for me. Moving on, next item, election of council officers. So we have to elect council president, council vice president. At this time, I'll open up the floor for nominations for council president.
I'll make a, okay, so we're just going to make motions and then we go from there, right?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Dan. It's not a motion. All we need is a nomination.
Just nomination? Yeah, just nominations. Nominations do not require a second. It's just placing the name for consideration. Pretty simple. And you can have as many nominations as you choose.
To complicate a little bit, I appreciate the leadership we've had this past year. And so I've been very proud to see that we can talk about all kinds of different issues and go across the aisle and do different things to cover it. So for that reason, if you consider again, Robert, I would like to nominate you.
I'm humbled. Thank you, Steve. Do we have, do we have any other nominations? Julie, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Don Loudon.
Four.
Steinberg?
Four.
Tim Roberts?
Epstein.
Greg Susan?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four. Now we'll open the floor for nominations for council vice president.
I'd like to nominate or make a motion for Tim to give him the experience that he's going to need. I think you would be a good person to lead him through that.
We have a nomination for Tim. Do we have any other nominations for council vice president?
I'll nominate myself.
We have a nomination for Tim and Greg. Any others?
I like either you do a great job.
We will go through the vote just to make it clear. I don't want us to get confused. If you vote for the first one, If you vote for the first one, you can't vote for the second one, I don't want us to get a point of order, get out of order. So Julie, would you take a roll call vote on Tim Roberts for vice president?
I gotta make all my notes here, okay. So Dawn?
Four.
Greg?
Against.
Tim?
Four.
Steve Eisenberg?
I'm glad you voted four, so now I know to say, four.
Robert Pope?
Against. I believe that was, we have three, we have our new officers. We can move on. Next item on the agenda, board and committee appointments. This is always the challenging and rough one, guys, so hopefully we, we got our questions out of the way. Let me, let me pull up my notes and sheets here. I'm gonna recommend that we, I think we did this last year and the year before, to, to appoint the council president appointments first and to start with RDC.
Okay.
That way, some of these are appointments that we'll need to be co-existent, co-extensive, excuse me, we'll need them on a board, another board first, and RDC is usually where we do that. So, for, forgive me, so RDC, goodness. RDC, there are three appointments that I will make, I will recommend Bob Kohler, pardon me, I will appoint Bob Kohler, Jason Tuttle, and Dave Kaufman to the RDC for a one-year term. We have one more as a council, council-wide appointment. I recommend Bill Reed to fill that spot, but again, this is a council-wide appointment. So for the moment, open the floor for recommendations. I would make a motion, I'll, I'll go ahead, I'll make a motion to that effect, Bill Reed for the council, town council appointment at the RDC. Dan, do we need motion in a second on appointments? Yeah, it's a normal, it's a normal motion, forgive me. So we would need a second and, and a vote.
No, I'll, I'll second that, I know he wants to do Plan Commission too, right?
Yes.
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 Yeah, no, that's fine.
He, he would need to be appointed to that for us to, for the co-extensive spot.
Yeah, he'd serve well there, so.
We've got a first and a second. Julie, I'm trying to slow it down, are we?
Oh, you're good.
I'm good.
You're good.
Would you mind taking a roll call vote, please?
Okay, Steve Eisenberg?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Dawn Loudon?
Four.
Greg Susan?
Four.
Tim Roberts?
Four.
That gives us the RDC. We do not have any recommendation from the school board yet, Ryan.
We do not know.
Okay.
A recommendation to council president?
The appointment will be by the council president, recommendations from the school board. You guys do have another, there's another town council vacancy on the redevelopment commission, you guys need to build-
Oh.
Yeah, I thought we were-
My apologies, guys, oh, man.
So you got Bill filled, you have one-
Thank you, Greg. I'm, you're right, I'm sorry. That was my other recommendation, was Jason Nguyen for the council appointment. And to that, I'll, I'll make a motion, Jason Nguyen to the other spot for the town council appointment to the RDC.
Greg, second.
We have a first and a second, Greg seconded it, Julie. Would you mind taking a roll call vote, please?
Okay. Tim Roberts?
Four.
Greg Susan?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Steve Eisenberg?
Four.
Dawn Loudon?
Four.
Thanks for catching that. Move down to-
Before I move on, what about the backups?
I did not speak to anybody for, that would be willing to be an RDC backup, and the two applicants didn't have experience on that. I don't know that I'm comfortable with naming either one of those, but that's just mine, a backup would be a council, well, depending on the position.
I was gonna say, I didn't reach out to Grant Niemeyer. The reason we appointed Grant, if you guys recall, last year, Grant had, was on the redevelopment commission and he said he kind of wanted a break. So if you guys are comfortable with it, Grant would be a good backup still if he's willing to be a backup, because at least he's familiar with that role. So if you guys are willing, I'll reach out to him and get back to you guys if you want to hold off on doing that backup appointment.
I'm fine with that, and even like I said earlier, that, you know, we've got some new people here that have applied. And it might be a, a position that they could be used as a backup, come to meetings, kind of get acclimated to it, get an understanding of what they're getting themselves into as well. And so I had put down Jennifer Spencer.
I spoke with Jennifer today, and she seemed anxious to want to come in and help. She, her experience is in real estate background, so if that makes a difference at all to anyone.
When I spoke to her, she seemed very knowledgeable on the Planning Commission, and she seemed very interested in serving on that board. I didn't ask a follow-up again, for the RDC again, limited experience is what I was, what my, my biggest chief concern with her was just the limited, limited-
It's just a name to go ask. Sure, it's not that we need to fill it right now, but if they decide to, we can update it later.
Now moving down to Planning Commission, let's see, we've got two, the council president that's open, that we make now. And I will recommend, I will appoint, pardon me, Mason Pike and Jennifer Spencer. Mason Pike, self, self-claimed independent, Jennifer Spencer, self-claimed Republican, so I believe that fits our balance, no more than two political parties, two, two political affiliations. For the, let's make sure, one, two, three are co-extensive, so these are, and these are the council-wide appointments. For those, I'd, I'd recommend Dave, Bill, and Greg, Steve, I know both of you have mentioned that you'd be interested in serving on that, I, I feel like we, we kind of have to turn to one of us for the lack of those on a board who'd be willing to serve in that roles, in that spot as well, so.
I told Steve I'd be willing to do it, so.
Yeah, and that's, that's fine, that's good. So Bill Reed, Dave Kaufman, right?
So yeah, my recommendations are Bill Reed, Dave Kaufman, and it sounds like Greg.
Greg, okay.
So I will make a motion to that extent for Dave Kaufman, Bill Reed, and Greg Susan to the Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. Julie, would you mind taking a roll call vote, please?
Okay. Robert Pope?
Four.
Steve Eisenberg?
Four.
Dawn Loudon?
Four.
Greg Susan?
Four.
Tim Roberts?
Four.
We, there's another one, we don't have a backup.
Larry, then, are you still on it then, Robert?
I, I am not, I am not.
Okay.
Effectively, if you want to look at it that way, Mason was who was sort of taking my spot there.
Oops, then the backup, you had had a conversation with Brianna Moss.
Yeah, she-
You're the backup?
I, my only, again, my only concern was lack of experience, but she seems, she seems very, actually far more knowledgeable than I would, I would say the average regular citizen would be on that, on that commission, so.
So Dan, all we're trying to do is put a name with a, as a potential replacement if somebody has to give notice. We're not committing to that person, we're, she, that person may be the first one we call to see if there's still interest, but we're not committing to them, are we?
Correct. You're saying that they would be in reserve and able to serve in the absence of the appointed person.
Yes, it's wise to do, yeah.
Did someone already also say the Jennifer Spencer, didn't you say that, Greg?
I pointed her. She, she's on there now, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I missed the line to write her on.
Would you, do you want to, you want to make that motion then?
Well, we had two before, the other one was Grant Niemeyer again, so I didn't know if Grant was, you want to check with him again, want to check on the other one? I mean, I'll make a motion that we contact Grant Niemeyer and Brianna Moss and see if they would consider being backups on, on the Plan Commission.
I didn't specifically ask Brianna to be a backup, but for my conversation, I would imagine she would. For now, we don't need to actually appoint them or make that motion. Well, you want to make that motion then for, we don't know if Grant does, do you want to make that motion for Brianna?
I just, is it my, my motion or recommendation for Ryan to call both of them to see if there's any interest?
Okay. We'll move on to BZA. We've got two, both of those are my appointments. I think Catherine and Marcus have done a great job and I will appoint both Catherine and Marcus back to the BZA. This is another one that we probably, it'd be good for us to have a backup. Pull up my notes for that one, it's the same ones, we've got a few people that know experience, and I didn't speak to them about backup in that role. I would be a little cautious with Jennifer, she now has an appointment. I don't know about throwing her on a second one so soon, that'd be my, my concern there. Moving on to Stormwater Nun, we've got Economic Development. So we, we have one appointment and one recommendation. For our recommendation, Dan, do we also need to make a motion for that person to be the recommended? Okay. For, for Economic Development Commission, I, I really, I gotta give kudos to Dawn for this. She recommended Stan Albal as a, as willing to serve and, and wanting to, you talked about reaching across the aisle. To that, I'd make a motion to appoint Stan Albal to the Economic Development Commission for our appointment.
So Jessica is, is not going to run again, so do we provide the county with our suggested-
Yes.
-member?
Correct.
So who is that going to be then?
I, my recommendation-
We had Tom Downard on there before, and that would be my recommendation. I just think we should have on there again, so.
It's my recommendation as well. I'm trying to split these up because they're different. One is our appointment, the other is just our recommendation, and the county council themselves actually picked that one. My, my recommendation would be, we recommend Tom Downard to the county council, to appoint to the EDC, and that we ourselves appoint Stan Albal.
Not to put Dave on the spot, but you're here tonight, not representing the county council, but you're on the county council, so do you take this back with you then, and then?
Yeah, you know, if I, we, at our meeting, Dave, we pretty much go into a separate recommendation by David, so. I'll understand that.
I think when I spoke with Dave, Greg, he said that we need to give it to-
Nancy.
Nancy Marsh or, or her assistant.
Where's the table, I mean?
Yeah.
We have a, we have a motion on the table for Stan Albal to the, for our appointment to the Economic Development Commission. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second? You, you ready? Okay, just making sure you're good, Julie.
I'm good, yep.
Do we, take a roll call vote, please, Julie?
Steve Eisenberg?
Four.
Dawn Loudon?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Greg Susan?
Epstein.
Tim Roberts?
Epstein.
We have, I recommend Tom Downard be our recommendation to the county council, so I'll make a motion that Tom Downard be our recommendation to the county council for the Economic Development Commission.
Thought that's what we were already voting on.
Epstein.
That was just Stan.
I second.
We have a first and a second. Julie, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Greg Susan?
Four.
Tim Roberts?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Steve Eisenberg?
Four.
Dawn Loudon?
Four.
Next one, Parks Advisory Council, we've got three council-wide appointments, and just one note, at least two of these have to be in town, the other one does not. Dave Jackson, Michelle Bettis, and Jennifer Thompson have all requested to be reappointed. I, I think they've done a great job. Dave Jackson and Jennifer Thompson are both in the town, so they, they meet our, our needs there. And to that end, I'd make a motion to reappoint Dave Jackson, Michelle Bettis, and Jennifer Thompson to the Parks Board.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. Do you need the names again?
Jennifer Thompson.
You got them?
Mm-hmm.
All right, would you take a roll call vote, please, Julie?
All right, Tim Roberts?
Four.
Greg Susan?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Steve Eisenberg?
Four.
Dawn Loudon?
Four.
Next is the Police Merit Board, we have one, council president appointment.
Need backups on that, because we had them last time.
For Parks?
What it's showing.
Oh, yeah, we did. Again, we can, I, I was, I was unable to speak with Ashley. I have no, no input on her.
On her application was, is this is the right one, she lived in Danville?
Yes.
Yes.
But was she building a house in Avon?
She says she is, yes. Again, I was unable to speak with her, so I couldn't even verify where the, that address would be, to say if that would be in town or not. Obviously, where she currently lives is not.
We can leave them, yeah.
All right, next, Police Merit Board, one is Police Department, one is Council President, and it has to be a Democrat or an Independent for this. I would recommend, I, I will appoint, reappoint Carrie Mize to that spot. She, she was only there for a few months last year to fill in a vacancy, and, and she's an amazing community member, and I think she's doing a great job on the Merit Board. Next, the-
I have a question, my only question is, and this for Chief Stoops, when you gave your presentation, there's going to be somebody that's going to roll off, because you don't have to identify, but it looks like, is that somebody that you, yourself or the police will fill that vacancy? We don't have to take any action on it tonight?
Correct.
Department member.
Okay, thank you.
Should we be aware of political affiliation on that one?
I, I believe they do, there still has to be a balance of no more than two members of the same party.
So Sean, should we look to one party or another?
On that one, that's hard to get taken care of.
Okay.
They can see for the members, he's to be a Democrat or anything, but those are the officers.
There, there are already two Republican, Republican members on that, so they, they can't be a, again, can't have more than two. At least that's my understanding. Next, the Fire Appeals Board. Brian, this has always been kind of rough, they, they've like, I think they've met once in, in its history, something to that effect. Have we been able to reach out, speak with these three?
No, my suggestion is, I think last year, we had the Jeff Stateen one, and I think we reached out to the Fire Marshal and asked for him to confirm those, and I don't believe we ever got a response, so I guess I'd like to reach back out, I think he's the one who actually found these people. The only one of the group I actually know is Darla Carlisle from Harlan, so I'm not, I don't even know who the other two people are, I don't even know how to get ahold of them, so I'd, I'd like to work through the Fire Marshal if that's okay with you guys, and I'll, I'll report back.
Okay.
My comment would be on the Fire Protection Professional, if that would be a Washington Township Avon firefighter or somebody from that department.
We can check with them.
It looks like this is going to be a harder one to fill based on several-
Yeah.
-spots.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Last, last one before liaison appointments, let me make sure, the Redevelopment Authority, yep, last one. The Redevelopment Authority, yep, last one. These are all council-wide. Bob Kohler, Harold Heiser, and Jason Nguyen, I believe, again, have been doing a good job and I would recommend that they be reappointed. To that effect, I'll make a motion to reappoint Bob Kohler, Harold Heiser, and Jason Nguyen to the Redevelopment Authority.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. I still see you writing, I'm not calling for it yet. All right, would you take a roll call vote, please, Julie?
Don Loudon.
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth.
Four.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Greg Zuzen.
Four.
Tim Roberts.
Four.
Okay, now we move to liaison. Liaison posts. Oh, no, I forgot, I forgot our other ones. Tax abatement, security, continuity of operations. Tax abatement committee, I would recommend Ryan Taylor and, pardon me, Ryan Cannon and John Taylor be reappointed to those as well, and so I'll make a motion to that effect. I re, I make a motion to reappoint Ryan Cannon and John Taylor to the tax abatement committee.
I'll second that. Then the school does the other one, right?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Julie, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Yep, Tim Roberts.
Four.
Greg Zuzen.
Four.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth.
Four.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Bless you.
The, the other two, the Security Committee and Continuity of Operations, these are both council president appointments. I will reappoint across the board here, Sean Stoops, Dan Taylor, Jared Wade, Shelby Marshall, and myself. I would like to add a staff member to help us. I am, I am terrible at staffing when we ran, when, when I was running this and you can only help shore yourself up with better people, so I would like to appoint Ryan to staff this. I don't know if it necessarily needs to, you need to be appointed, but did you get those names? Just, okay. The other one, continuity of operations, Dawn, forgive me, I don't know that we specifically spoke about this, are you okay being? Okay. Then I will reappoint Sean Stoops, Steve Moore, Mike Tully, Don Loudon, and again, I will add Ryan Cannon to staff that meeting. We have a missing recommendation from the Fire Department to help us staff that. I believe Ted Allen was who we appointed last year. I'll leave that to their recommendation and I would, I'm going to ask Ryan if you could help us make sure we get that.
Yes, I'll reach out.
Okay, now liaison appointments. Oh boy. Well, I, since Greg, you are on the Planning Commission, I would recommend, and by the way, these are council votes, these are council-wide decisions here, I would recommend Greg be the Planning Commission, Planning and Building Department liaison. You guys have all seen my, my email with my recommendations. I'm going to, I'm just going to run through these so they're on the public record. Greg to Planning Commission, Planning and Building Director, HCEDP and the Economic Development Department, myself, Parks, Parks Board and Parks Department, Dawn, Police Merit and Police Department, Tim.
Slow down a little.
Yep. I, this is-
This is the one that's hard because it's, we're like jumping all over our tracking system, so sorry.
Fair enough.
Or does it make it easier for you?
So that's, that's why I was trying to just run through naming.
Starting with Greg.
Just give them the email.
I do have the email, so if it's per your email, then that's fine, I'll do that.
Go through it and send me an email.
So that's what I wanted to do, is communicate it publicly so we have it on the record, two, so we have some motions that can be made to support that, but I can, I can definitely get you this list.
If it's per that, we'll go with that.
Okay.
I'll clean it up and I'll send it to you as you confirm.
Police Merit, Police Department, Tim, Stormwater Public Works Department, myself, RDC, Greg, BZA, Steve, Economic Development Commission, Greg, RDA, Redevelopment Authority, Greg, Annexation, Dawn, and myself, Township, Library, and WCCD, Tim, Chamber of Commerce, Dawn, Citizens Water Board, Ryan, Dispatch Board, County Dispatch Board, Steve, Steve Eisenbarth, we're getting ready to get to another Steve here, so make sure that's clear. Steve Eisenbarth, Hendricks County Recycling, Steve Eisenbarth, the IRTC Policy, Ryan, IRTC Technical, Steve Moore, the AeroVision CIEO and Collaboration Group, myself. Any problems with that?
I don't know if they have any problems with this. So on the IRTC, please remember you guys have, for the Policy Committee, you need a member and then a backup for technical and policy, and we do need to replace that because we had a former employee as one of the backups, so we need to correct that. So you gave me as the policy member with Steve as, as the technical member, but I'd suggest you appoint Steve as the backup, and then for the IRC Tech Committee, I'd suggest Keaton be the backup.
So let me get, IRTC Policy, you as the member, Steve Moore as the backup, for IRTC Technical, Steve Moore as the member, and Keaton as the backup.
Correct.
Okay.
The only other question I have is, John Taylor's been going to the HCEDP meetings. Is there economic development employee, should he be included in that as well?
In the HCEDP? Oh, I, I believe that's sort of part of his job duties. I don't need, necessarily need, thought that that needed to be an appointment or liaison. Does he need to be appointed to that?
Yeah, it shows up as both of you.
Okay.
At least our tracking system shows that's both of you.
Okay.
But I think you're right, John would go either way.
Yeah.
So I think it's fine.
Well, to that extent, then I would recommend that our Economic Development Director be the liaison to HCEDP as well.
And then I was going to mention, if you want, since it's more transportation-related, AeroVision, I would, I wouldn't mind doing that, if you want to have a relief of that, you know.
To, to be fair, I don't, I think it rarely meets, I don't believe-
I like that.
I met last year.
Didn't meet the year that I was because it was 2020.
Right, well, if they ever meet, I like to know what they got going.
Then I'll, I will make that change, Steve Eisenbarth to AeroVision. I'll, I'll have to update when I send this email, I'm just keeping a note, I'll make sure to send that. So again, these are council-wide appointments, so I will make a motion to what I just covered with that, is that kosher? All right, we have, we have a first and a-
I'll second, yeah.
We have a first and a second with all, you got all that covered?
Got it all.
Julie, would you take a roll call vote, please?
All right, Robert Pope.
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth.
Four.
Greg Zuzen.
Four.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Tim Roberts.
Four.
Lot of work, thanks for plowing that head.
It's, it's never easy.
Nope, it's not. Tough decisions.
I'm, I'm sorry. Do we, do we need to appoint the police chiefs in a meeting? No? If that's the case, I'll say it for the record, I'm reappointing Sean, Brian, and Dave. I mean, you guys ain't getting out of it, that's, I think we take care of that after the fact, but if it needs to be for the record, there it is.
Well, second and third it.
All right, moving on. Next item on the agenda, Town Attorney 2023 Engagement Letter. Ryan, I assume you're speaking to this?
Yeah, introduce it. I think typically on the first meeting of the year, we always provide the attorney engagement letter, and so you've been provided that by the town attorney as well as a resume. And so he is requesting a amendment to his fee, which is very reasonable. Of course, we are all aware of the inflation situation over the last year, so Dan has been so courteous, he's probably below the inflation rate, so thank you for that, and certainly if Dan may want to offer something as well.
Yeah, this letter is otherwise the same as we've had before, so it does propose a new rate of $225 per hour, which is a 7.14 increase, which matches the Midwest CPI increase of last year from December 1st to November 30th. Otherwise, as this letter indicates, we would perform all legal services for the town on an hourly basis and that we would do that as long until you told us not to, and that you could, of course, fire us at any time, which is consistent with the rules that we lawyers have to follow. This would be our 21st year with the town. We've greatly enjoyed working with the councils and staff and we look forward to doing so again.
I want to point out that Duke Energy case, it's a huge win for us, but little Neil Armstrong, there's a small step for man, but giant leap for mankind, it's a big win for municipalities across Indiana, so.
It is statewide.
Right.
That's, appreciate that.
Huge case, thank you for your support and-
Well, if we need to make a motion, I make a motion that we honor the engagement letters submitted by Mr. Taylor and continue with the law firm of Taylor, Minett, Schneider, and Clutter as our legal counsel.
I will second that. Any further discussion? Julie, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Greg Zuzen.
Four.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth.
Four.
Tim Roberts.
Four.
Next item on the agenda, accept annexation petitions. I've got to assume you're speaking to this one too, Ryan?
Yes, we are talking, you guys are right after this agenda item, we're going to have a public hearing on the Oxford Park annexation, so we have kind of continued to have dialogue and discussion with the property owners within that annexation area. We did receive two additional voluntary petitions. If all of you will recall, the, this annexation of this area, there's a couple of agricultural properties to the south, and so both of these property owners, others agricultural property owners to the south, I did not have time to get it on your agenda, but it'll be on your next agenda. There were three property owners to the south, all three of them have signed the voluntary petition, so on your next agenda, we'll accept that petition from the third property owner. I do, I do have the map, just in case you guys don't recall, I know this is a little hard to see, but these are the, these are the two property owners we're accepting here, this is Murdoch, and then this is Susan Wood, and then Sutton signed as well, that's the one that you guys will see next month, and then just as a reminder, we received about 80 petitions from the Oxford Park neighborhood as well, so, which is the public hearing after this. So the council does need to accept the petitions. Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I make a motion, we accept the voluntary annexation petition from James and Krista Murdoch as well as from Susan F. Wood.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second, any further discussion? All right, Julie, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Steve Eisenbarth.
Four.
Greg Zuzen.
Four.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Tim Roberts.
Four.
Robert Pope.
Four. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for annexation of Oxford-
Can I just make one statement? Because on one of these, it does state annexation, abatement, even though the other one doesn't say it, and I don't know what the other one's going to say, just make certain that we get them the abatement.
Yes, I think I wrote it on there, I think that was, Ian scanned that one when it was turned in to me, I think we documented on there, and that third property owner is also an agricultural abatement.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, public hearing, annexation for Oxford Park. At this time, at 8:02, we will open up the public hearing for the Oxford Park annexation. If you'd like to speak, please come to the mic, state your name and address, and please limit your time to three minutes.
I'm a past president of the Oxford Park HOA and-
Sir, please, please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ken Mulley and I live at Ballybunion, 5169 Ballybunion.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. We've been working on this off and on for a long time, and in the last year, we really got motivated to do something about it, and as Ryan has advised us, our roads are in excellent shape, there's no need for the city to come in and work for that stuff. We would like to include snow removal on, on the maintenance part of it, so it's, there's a lot of virtue to having us as part of Avon, and I'm sure there's a lot of virtue for you to incorporate us, so, you know, to make the tax base wider and so on and so forth. So, we're working on and hopefully we progress.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing at 8:04. Next item on the agenda, Legal Counsel Report, Mr. Taylor.
The, we did receive a favorable summary judgment ruling on the Duke Energy case, which was mentioned earlier, and I just want to thank all the staff, that's been a six-year battle, so we've, we've had lots of help getting there, it's a nice win for us, and we also would report to the town council that we're, we've been busy lately preparing for another big round of litigation and your employees have made themselves available, both for deposition prep and also gathering of documents, we appreciate, we've been here a lot with them and we are just getting ready for the next one.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the second of two public comment opportunities. If you'd like to, please, if you'd like to speak, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and limit your time to three minutes.
Dave Haas with the Hendricks County Council. I apologize in advance, each is awful, but I've had two bouts of throat cancer in the last 10 years, so when I started police work in 73, they told us not to talk on the radio if somebody was standing next to the antenna at the end of the heart. Three years later, they handed me a portable radio with the antenna right here by my ear. I've had three tumors.
Oh boy.
So, who knows, right? We all die from cell phones, but just to say, I am just one member of the council and I look forward to working with your new council this year, and, and since I just started realistic, you don't have to follow me before, so I'm open, my drawers and phones are always open, if you need anything, call, and the, your, I said, your recommendation, I'm sure it'll be rubber stamped, I'll present that at our next meeting, which will be the first meeting in February, and I'd like to thank, one of the things that, back when I was on the Avon Town Council, I was able to do was bring to the council's attention Mr. Taylor, and even though they didn't always see eye to eye, which is what you want from an attorney, you don't want an attorney telling you what you want, you want to tell you what the law is. So, good to say I've been proud that Dan's done a fairly decent job for you, for Avon. Thank you. Again, don't hesitate to holler if you need it, I'm always open.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Dave. Appreciate you.
I'm going to do public comment. I just want to thank all five of you for this very easy process tonight. I know the boards and everything could have been lawn and dry out, so thank you for making it very easy, and I'm super excited to work with all five of you this year. I know it's going to be a great year, we're going to grow Avon even more, we're all going to-
We're already starting on it.
We're already starting on it, and we're going to make this an even better town to live in than it already is. Congratulations, Robert. Congratulations, Tim, on your vice presidency, and thank all of you for everything you do every day. Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Second opportunity for council comment, would anyone just like to share?
Well, because Dave's here, we need more money for our joint projects, if you can get us everything we ask for next time versus just a portion of it, I'd appreciate it. And again, I want to thank Dan Taylor and his team, they've done a great job, and I've seen them since I've been here from the beginning, and I don't think there's a better law firm out there than there is, so thank you, Dan and Hannah. Stell Mitchell, I must have to thank him too.
Happy birthday, Mitchell.
That's right. That's right.
Tim, we've got some work to do, man.
We do. I just want to thank everybody for their support. At the end of the day, if we don't come together as a town in a cohesive unit, we've all signed up and we're elected for the wrong position. So I hope, and I pray, that the community gets behind each and every one of us in the decisions that we make for them, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you.
Ryan, Julie, all of your staff, Mr. Taylor and your law firm, and Chief Stoops, Ms. Rude, and everybody. Look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Next item, council calendar. Got some work sessions, executive session.
Next meeting, January 26th. We are going to do an executive session, just as a reminder, at 6:00 PM, and then your regular scheduled council meeting will be at 7:00 PM. So we'll see you then.
Be your journey.